Welcome to another episode of Municipal Focus. I will be your host today, as you know, normally myself and Bob Hayes. We take turns with the Municipal Focus moniker. And we use this as a way to talk about different things other than the two communities we serve, which is Whitman and Hanson. We kind of expand our horizons through the conversation. And well, it's the political season. We thought we would take the opportunities lately to talk about a couple of different things. Today, we're actually going to talk about the county, Plymouth County, to be exact. And we have a Plymouth County Commissioner. We flew him all the way here from the great town of Pembroke. We have Greg Handley.
Good to see you, Kevin.
Good to see you, sir. Nice to have you here. What's funny is, is your colleague, Dan Pallotta, not too long ago, did a Municipal Focus. So we have both of you on the record to be able to kind of talk about what it is that you do, your passion for what goes on in the county, some of the things that you guys have been able to achieve while in office, and why folks, whether they start voting early and often, or wait till November 8th, why they should check off your name when it comes to re-electing you as a county commissioner.
Well, the funny thing is, in this tumultuous time with all the politics of hate and anger, Dan and I and Sandra have been able to work together. And I'm reminded of the quote by John Kennedy that said, "It's not the Republican answer we seek, nor the Democratic answer, but the right answer." I'm the only Democrat who serves with two Republicans. And of the hundreds of votes we've taken, literally, we've only disagreed once, and it was a philosophical thing. So...
But that's unheard of. Now, myself being a reporter for a local radio station, I have covered many Plymouth County Commissioner meeting back in the day, when you, you know, it was just a matter of time, you'll check your watch, and oh, there should be a disagreement any moment. It wouldn't matter what the particular item was on the agenda there, where you knew that there were going to be two people disagreeing about something, and it would be a lengthy debate until, you know, until the chair or somebody said, "All right, let's move this along and go to the next item on the agenda." It's so, it's kind of nice to hear that at least there's a little bit of harmony when it comes to county government.
Certainly, there's collegiality. I mean, thinking back on those times you just mentioned, I recall that the problems they used to have is how do we spend the money? And the problem with this group of commissioners is when we got into office, the cupboard was beer. So the work was so obvious to us that we had to roll up our sleeves and go to work. So, you know, the things we've been able to accomplish in our first term weren't what we ran on in our last term when we were running campaign-wise. Albeit, I was able to put the trash initiative and the solar initiative forward. We had to get our finances in order. And how we did that was basically working as a team, working with our legislative delegation. We're very lucky in Plymouth County that the delegation of reps and senators that represent us all signed on to seven pieces of legislation over four years that have made a difference in Plymouth County. If you can imagine, from 2008 till now, they had never done audits. And it took us four years, and we'll be able to announce at the next advisory board meeting that we've completed all the audits dating all the way back to 2008. That really handicapped us in terms of our ability to borrow money on behalf of the member communities for capital projects or design projects. A lot of what we apply for grant-wise with the federal government or the state requires seed money. And unless you're partnering with a community, the county doesn't have an independent source of revenue other than what we get from the deeds excise tax, what we get from the assessment, and what the county commissioners have been able to put together in terms of revenue-generating programs. For example, we have the vehicle bid. That has generated over $200,000 for us in commissions. And all we did was negotiate pricing on vehicles for member communities to take advantage of, and it's better than the state bid. So on every vehicle sold, we get a commission, and that goes into our general fund.
Do you have to worry about giving any of that money to Big Brother, the state of Massachusetts, the Commonwealth? Do you have to give any of that?
No. They're a tax-exempt body, and the revenue we generate is from fees and services provided. So there's no taxation. We don't get taxed on it.
Well, I ask you, I ask you that for the simple fact of that I know that money that is collected in regards to the registry of deeds, that that's something that it's done on behalf of the county.
Yes.
Yet, the state somehow plays a role in that. Could you explain that?
Yeah. What it is, is for every transaction at the registry of deeds, there's a fee associated with it. And 90 cents of every dollar that's transacted out of that goes to the Commonwealth's general fund. Exactly.
Wait, 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 but what does the state do to earn that? Nothing, right?
Nothing, absolutely nothing. It's an antiquated law. We have introduced legislation that would allow for the county to get a fairer share of that money. Back in the 80s, there used to be 42 cents on the dollar, it used to come back to the county. And now it's down to 10 cents. So for us, it's been a difficult road. But because of the energy and because of the expertise of not only the commissioners, but our county treasurer, our county registry of deeds, our county administrator, we have put together a team that is focused on solving problems. And we don't talk about problems, but just solutions. So, you know, we have a positive attitude. We, you know, the Democrat and Republican thing goes aside until election year, and then you try to make a difference along the way. So I think we've been pretty successful. We retired about $32 million in debt with a combination of legislation that retired the legacy costs, the OPEB liability of the retirees from the county jail.
The sheriff's department?
Yep.
Which is no longer a part of the county.
Correct. Department of Corrections took that over in 2010. They took the $110 million asset that the residents of the county paid for, and they left behind the retirement costs, the legacy costs, the health insurance costs. So we felt as if that was a bit of an inequity. And along the way, we coupled that with our ability to create the Plymouth County OPEB Trust, which allows member communities to participate in a larger pool, to get a higher rate of return on their investment because, you know, and I always say this when I'm doing my speeches about the county, it's not a glamorous form of government. But when I, so when I say the General Accounting Standard Board is Gatsby 45, people's eyes glaze over. But that is something that the state has put in place so communities can pay as they go on their liabilities to pension obligations, insurance, et cetera. And for the first time ever, they are going to be required to put it on the balance sheet. So, for example, when I was a selectman over in Pembroke, I would get a sheet that had all of these OPEB liabilities listed, but were not listed on our balance sheet. So when someone retired and they had accumulated sick time or, you know, vacation time, there'd be a buyout feature that wasn't on anyone's balance sheet. So Gatsby 45 says, "Now, you have to pay as you go, and you have to record all those liabilities on your balance sheet." What we have done in the county is put together an IRS-approved accounting program where they can invest in the trust, and the money is managed by a national bank. And I think we have over $3 million in assets under management. And so the town of Plimpton may have a, you know, $40,000 OPEB liability, but the city of Quincy, Quincy College, put $1 million into that OPEB trust. So that $1 million combined with the $20,000 or $40,000 gets put together, and then the highest rate of return is 7% to 8%. Whereas if Plimpton wanted to get money on its own, they'd get like 1% or 2% on their money. So between the legislation and the trust, we've been able to save member communities roughly $32 million.
I probably should have asked you this at the very, very beginning, but just to clarify, just so folks know, what is a county commissioner? And what is the, what is the board that you are a part of, the county commissioners?
We're a regional form of government. We were enacted way back in 1685. We are incorporated. And it is nationwide the model for government, where...
County government.
County government down in Florida and California does all your police, your fire...
Right, it varies.
Yes.
And we're very parochial here.
So we go back to the pilgrims, literally. And slowly but surely, over the course of time, you know, member communities have decided to go it on their own in their own strategy. Some communities, because of their size, really should take advantage of the programming that we offer, because although we offer it, not everyone takes advantage of it. So, you know, it's an à la carte menu of services. So we do, for housing authorities, for example, we do their Gatsby 45 compliance. We put out a procurement, and over 73 entities have participated in that. We get a fee for it, but they get reduced costs for those services. So county commissioners, there's three of us. We are in charge of two Shire towns, Brockton and Plymouth. Originally, they were the court system. They maintain the courts, and it's historical in nature. But the Plymouth Court, which we were in for years as the county commissioners, is now going to be refurbished to be the new Plymouth Town Hall.
Beautiful building.
Oh, it's gorgeous. And Bill Cohen and the folks down in Plymouth with the CPA are just doing a fabulous job. And we hate it to be evicted. But we're now up in our own administrative building, which is the Entergy Control Room for the, for the power plant. So they're in the basement, and we have the upper part, and we own the building, so we refurbished that. We house the treasurer's department. We house the retirement system through the county administrator's office and the 4-H program. So we oversee the courts, the 4-H program. We oversee the registry of deeds, the treasury. We have, the treasurer is on the Plymouth County Retirement Board. So again, it's administrative form of government. We've been able to put together those purchasing procurement contracts for appliances for housing authorities, salt procurement for member communities, which is a big one. Fuel is another one we've been involved in. But again, if we could get all the people to participate, then it would be good for them, and it would be good for us. But people sometimes do it, go as, you know, do it your own strategy, go it alone strategy.
Is it a worry of losing their autonomy in order if they do?
I think in some cases...
I think some communities, they worry about losing, being autonomous to certain, certain services and things like that. I've heard that from...
Yeah.
Certain folks who are town administrators or town managers who feel that they want to kind of be on to their own instead of relying on a group of individuals or, or communities.
I'm always reminded of the commercial by Ernie Bach, "If I can buy for less, I can sell for less." If you regionalize the government in whatever facet it may be, we do have a trash program that's in permitting in Plymouth, and we have a solar program that's also in permitting in Plymouth that will generate $20 million over 20 years, the two programs. So when you look at that opportunity, the member communities are going to be able to take advantage of a trash transfer station that since Plymouth closed theirs, it's a south station, South Street landfill closure back about five years now, there's been no opportunity for commercial traffic to come in for construction debris and other things. And then we look at the Energy Cooperative that we've negotiated with the solar farm. There's a 30-acre, 6-kilowatt solar array that is planned for the 100 acres that we have down at exit five. But again, these are programs that are procured with vendors on our behalf. So they, the problem is, they have to go it alone with the town to get permitting. It's not the county being permitted, it's those vendors. But from those programs, the county will get $20 million, but the member communities will get reduced rates on, in the area of solar, reduced electrical. So every housing authority can take advantage of reduced rates, because the program that the state is offering now gives them a better discount if they purchase their power from Plymouth County.
There was a particular time before this group assembled, yourself, Dan Pallotta, Sandra Wright, where there was discussion of, basically, I'm going to use a boxing analogy, and that is, the county, Plymouth County, was on the ropes.
Down go the frage.
Taking a right, taking a left, in the form of doing away. I mean, if you look at how many counties actually have a county government in the state, I believe, I think there's an individual who famously said that there's nine of 14 that are still around, are still viable?
Yeah.
Okay. But you do have some counties that do not have county government, because the state has taken it over. What have you, what have you guys done as a group? What have you done as a part of that, that group of people to kind of bring it back from nearly being KOed or TKOed to where now it's something that's more viable? What have you done?
Well, let me just comment on why those other counties were not a business, is because when you run for election, you know, you're elected by the voters, and you may or may not have the credentials to, you know, do the job. And the bottom line with this group of commissioners is every single one of us have been in one form or number, either a selectman or a counselor. And we understand local government on the local level. So I think what drives us is our concern. I think Sandra's still a counselor in Bridgewater...
That's right.
...for the member communities. And when we looked individually, Dan was Hanover, I was Pembroke, we look at the things that plagued us individually, and we put our collective minds together to kind of develop programming. Now, the only hindrance to that is revenue. So when we got into office, there was a $750,000 a year structural deficit, which they didn't tell us about when we were running. And then when we got there, it was based on contractual obligations with some of our bargaining units. And if you looked at them, the recurring costs, we thought it was a one-time deal. It was an annual deal. So when the 9C cut came from Deval Patrick on a $10 million budget, we would cut $1,200,000, okay? Imagine what that would do to your budget, right? So we had to work with our bargaining units and put together a program of furloughs, pay freezes, and some of the youngins didn't want to participate in that. Two of the three did, and 16 people lost their jobs as a result of that. And that has been, was the biggest problem I saw with trying to solve the problems. But going back to the previous board of commissioners, they ran on closing the county. They started the charter commission. Charter commission studied it and said it would be cheaper to keep the county open than to close it, because the debt obligation was the same. At least you'd be getting services if the county remained open. So what differentiates, differentiates us from the other people is that we knew we could make a difference for our member communities. And so when you look at Sandra Wright's dredge program, for example, she was in the lakes in Lakeville region, and then you look at the member communities from Hingham to Plymouth that had harbor, saltwater dredging issues, you know, that is something that she championed. She went out, she got the grant, we purchased the dredge. The only problem has been, because all of the areas where we proposed to dig in requires permitting from either DEP, EPA, or Army Corps. So although we've had that dredge for a year, we haven't been able to assign it to a program that has been permitted. And those sometimes take 18 to 24 months.
It's basically in the works, though.
It is. It is. So I don't know if I answered your question in terms of...
No, you did. You kind of gave, because my follow-up to you will be, is where you've been able to kind of bring it back. You've brought the county and the concept back. I think, I would think, the next step would be is just getting your members, the membership, those who are part of the county, those towns, those communities, to believe. And myself is somebody who, you know, from time to time, I participate in conversations. And one of the things that's asked, put to people who are looking to, you know, help the people of this county, what's your thought on county government? And I will say is that more people are saying that it's, they're seeing it more as a viable option than if you asked them a year or two or three ago. How's that make you feel, knowing that slowly, as a board, you guys are winning people over? What are you going to have to do to continue that progress, to get people to be on board with what you guys are doing as a group?
I think if you look back to the $750,000 annual deficit that we had, and then contrast with that with today, with us having a surplus budget of close to $330,000, I think that speaks volumes. And it was getting our financial house in order. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention Tom O'Brien, Jeff Welsh, his deputy, our new administrator, fabulous, Frank Basler. He had a bit of a learning curve, but he came from the private sector, and he has turned things around in terms of just attitude, you know? It's a fresh perspective. He goes out into the communities, he introduces himself to the management teams of every community, and he makes county government accessible and available to them. That took us about two years to remove the previous individual and get a fresh perspective in with Frank. And then you look at John Buckley. I mean, what he's been able to do with the tech fund, his work with the Secretary of State, I mean, county government versus the old, you know, the other ones that went out in Plymouth County in particular, is thriving, because I think all of the boats are in the right direction. There's no attitudes, there's no egos. We all know what we have to do, and there's not enough money to go around. But if we're successful in our programming, then we'll rely less on the Commonwealth and more on what we can do. We don't need their help, to be honest with you. The thing about county government, the federal government recognizes us as the entity where people can partner with us, and the money flows through the county. And even if we just got a little administrative fee for that kind of service, it's all about revenue and revenue, thinking outside the box, and not settling for allowing the state to just run things for us. I would say lastly, and with respect to answering that question, that our biggest obstacle now in our number-one goal, if re-elected, is going to be, for the second time, refiling the deeds excise tax legislation. You know, right now, with the OPEB retirement of the county, that $32 million is being picked up by 10 cents of the dollar that comes from the registry of deeds. So technically, we're at 20 cents of the dollar, you know, reimbursement to the county.
Sure.
We want to get up to 42 cents, and after 2024, have that 10 cents stay in the county and not towards the retirement of that debt. So it's Plymouth County money that's transacted.
Right.
It's the real estate that's transacted in Plymouth County, and it's almost like we, we have to pay homage to like the old, the Scottish used to do to the lords, you know? And he is, you know, so, but we're doing, we're doing good things, and if elected again, or re-elected, you know, we hope to do great things.
You almost invoked a William Wallace quote out of me.
Wow. And I knew you would know that.
Right, oh yeah. I love that movie Braveheart. So I guess you kind of touched upon one area that I was going to go in regards to, success on November 8th. What's the course that you plot forward for the next couple of years? You already kind of said one of them, which is the legislation in regards to getting monies back to the county. What else? What are some of the other things that you see are priorities or things that you feel that'd be for the betterment of the county?
Right off the bat, I have a relationship that was recently formed with the Army Corps of Engineers. So for me personally, we get to, each one of us gets to do our own pet projects. So each commissioner does their own thing. Like Dan takes care of owner's project management projects, like the courthouses. That's his baby.
Say, thought he'd be 4-H?
Yeah.
Know that he's a master...
He is a goat milker.
Goat milker, he can do that.
Award-winning.
Award-winning.
Yes.
I think the 4-H project would have been his. You know, that 4-H area would be his, but no kidding.
Yeah, I've often, you know, volunteered for the blueberry pie eating contest, and I never get called. You know, I don't know why, but, you know...
You're a threat, is the problem.
Yes.
As you were saying, though.
The Army Corps is something that we have been contacted by, and the regional person wants to work with us, again, because we're the regional entity, to work with the member communities from Hingham down to Wareham, and everything on the coastline that is in their purview. So I've already reached out to Marshfield, Plymouth, and Situate immediately on their needs. And after the election, we'll be sitting down with them to kind of find out what is common between the entities, or what is, you know, an individual project. All of them have shovel-ready projects, ready to go, that the Army Corps could potentially underwrite and support and fund. So that's something I'm definitely going to explore. We're still, you know, waiting on the permitting of those other two programs. I know that the courthouses, we did pass legislation, I don't know if Dan spoke of it when he was with you, to make the courthouses, the court system, pay the county on time.
It's been a big problem.
18 months to get our money back.
Chase your money. You guys maintain, you own them, you maintain them, and then you're going to put your hand out and go, "Hey."
And then we have to staff them. So the previous commissioners, this is an interesting one, a case study. The previous commissioners, in their attempt to save money, laid off people in janitors and plumbers, electricians, carpenters, in the hopes of saving money. But it's a 100% reimbursed item that they allow to slip away. So for the county to get those people back, we have to front close to half a million dollars just to get those bodies back and wait 18 months to get our money. So when Terry Murray was the Senate President, she was successful in getting the legislation passed to make the court system pay on time. And that was huge for us, because we'd be laying out all this capital, and then sometimes they would, they would just cut our requisition and say, "Wait a minute, we spent this money." And then the retirees' money from the court employees was also something we were paying that the trial court wasn't. So that legislation addressed that. So we've cleaned the house up, so to speak, and now what we've got to do is expand and try to build some new things. The 4-H program is doing wonderful. They just added an equine program...
Wow.
...last November, December, and that thing's taken off. I mean, when you give kids in communities that don't have, you know, downtowns or, it's rural, and if you give them a setting to explore and create, either by planting or husbandry, animal husbandry, it's a wonderful thing. And we have some of the best when the state has an annual 4-H day, and our people are consistently getting high honors and praise, which for me, it's just, it's very gratifying, you know? So, I don't know, Kev, you know, we'll see what we can do, you know?
We got about three minutes left. Anything, any area that we haven't talked about, but you want to at least take a moment to kind of at least discuss or at least share with the people who are watching this?
Well, it's been an honor for me to serve. I take great pride. We're not an in for the money. It's something that you want to give back. You know, you make a lot of personal sacrifices with your families, and you just hope that they understand why you're doing it, and it's really on their behalf, and their friends and neighbors and, you know, on their behalf as well. I have something to give. How long I'll be able to do it, I don't know. I don't think I'll ever lose interest. But, you know, I'm involved with Plymouth, Quincy College, the Plymouth campus, I'm on the Board of Governors down there. I just recently got off the state plumbing board after service of nine years. I was on the Sells Show Public Charter School, because we had at one point thought about putting Addiction High School down on the 100 acres down there, and I was told upfront that, you know, the best way to do that would be through the charter school system. Dick White, former superintendent in Pembroke, invited me down to learn that system. And then I left that after two years. So I'm filling in, into supplement, you know, helping people. You know, I'm on the Sells Show Work Investment Board that runs from Quincy to Plymouth. So a lot of constituent help I provide through all these other boards. So, you know, I guess it goes back to my city council and selectman days. It's kind of the basic form of government. If someone picks up the phone to call you for help, you try to, you know, funnel the resources. So looking forward to the challenges of the next four years. Hopefully, we can make a difference. And I want to thank you, Kevin, because, and I'm not just saying this, I really appreciate the forums that you put up, because you're educating the public as to what we do and what other public officials do. I would say that what you bring to the table is a public service as well, and I do appreciate it.
We try to do it in an unbiased manner. Doesn't matter what you have next to your name.
That's why I show up when you invite me. Other people invite me, and I don't show up.
It's because they bother you with J.P. Ryan's, you're one of your, one of your favorite establishments. How's your brother doing these days?
My brother's doing very well. The owner of that establishment, he is another guy who does a lot of public service through the charitable events that he hosts.
Absolutely.
Alex Bazanson, the Hugs Foundation, who does a tremendous program. And, you know, there's a lot of road races, the big parade every year, St. Patrick's Day.
Can't go wrong. How do people find out more about you and what you're doing these days?
Plymouth County is our website. You can go down there. Another thing that this group of commissioners started, we have, all of our meeting minutes are on. And, you know, take a look at it and peruse it. Looking forward, hopefully, to the 400th Committee down on Plymouth. That seems like a very exciting thing for all of us in the region. And I want to thank you and the voters and all the folks of Plymouth County for having me, and look forward to, if I'm lucky enough, to make the next step.
We'll talk again soon. And we thank you for joining us. And don't forget, get yourselves informed before you head out and cast a ballot come November 8th. Hey, until next time, you've been watching Municipal Focus. Have a great day.